Welcome to the June 27th Select Board Meeting. Please join me for the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Just so everyone knows, this meeting is being recorded and is broadcast on local cable television and Facebook Live through Easton Cable Access Television. And just to introduce the board members that are here tonight, on the far left we have Jamie Stebbins, Mark Lamb, I'm Dottie Fortunetti, Craig Barger, and then Town Administrator Connor Reed, Assistant Town Administrator Michael Blanchard, and our Executive Assistant Elizabeth. So, thank you for being here tonight. The first item on the agenda is the announcement of the appointment of the new Police Chief Keith Boone effective July 9th, 2022.
Deputy Boone for the next few days is walking up. I am the public bed following the completion of his assessment center and motion exam process that we had outlined would retire Chief Sullivan earlier this calendar year. I have selected to appoint Keith Boone to serve as Easton's next Police Chief effective July 9th. While Deputy Boone is familiar to us, I thought his resume would be worth noting here for those at home who may not know him as well as we do. He is a lifelong Easton resident and graduate of Auburn's High School. His 20-year career in the Easton PD began with an appointment as Special Officer back in 2002, then appointment as a full-time officer in 2006. Since that time, he's been promoted to Sergeant in 2013 and Deputy Chief in 2015, a role which he's now held for seven years, which can't be considered that long. And frankly, has served as a model for us and Dottie in particular. You and I, for a long time, have been working to build more resiliency into the town's organization with key deputy appointments and promotions. And Deputy Boone really was kind of the model for what a great number two can be and can do. Earlier in his career in the Easton PD, he was certified as a defensive tactics instructor, served as systems administrator for the police department, served as shift commander, accreditation manager. Now, of course, folks are paying a lot of attention to police reform and the creation of posts and state accreditations. Massachusetts is one of the last states in the United States to create a state accreditation body, so there's been basically a voluntary peer review process that departments could undergo if they so chose to have their policies basically audited by peers. And the Easton PD has been a leader there, and that is one of the areas under Chief Sullivan that they've done a great job in, that Deputy Boone has been critical to as well. So, he was once the accreditation manager for the department and a child seat technician, which is always good. In his executive roles, he has served as a public information officer responding to critical incidents with the press and the public, records officer, internal affairs officer. And he also supports Easton's Human Rights Committee as a Town of Easton Civil Rights Officer. While deputy, he also completed his master's degree in his free time in criminal justice from Bridgewater State and completed the United States FBI Leadership Trilogy focusing on supervision, command, and leadership. Deputy Boone has also been a critical member of the town's leadership, working with and supporting Chief Sullivan, and took major roles in regional efforts such as serving on SEMRECs Building Committee. No offense to our PMA representatives in the room, but we all know how much work and weekly technical review committee meetings can be. And, you know, just kind of in the background, without much fanfare, Deputy Boone was working on the building committee for SEMREC and working with SEMREC, I think, back as far as 2012 on some of the earlier studies with, at that point was just kind of all the chiefs and deputies in a room with a hope and a prayer trying to see if this would ever work.
Yes.
Yeah. Just a lot of work on important projects that have really shaped where we are as a community and a region today. Should the board ratify but propose employment agreement item that's later on this agenda, Chief Boone would begin his first day, first administrative day on Monday, the 11th of July, and a ceremonial swearing-in and badge-pinning will be held that evening at the Select Board meeting. As discussed earlier this year, following his retirement on July 8th, Chief Sullivan will be available as a consultant to assist Chief Boone with the transition, to ensure a smooth leadership handoff as we've done with all of our other critical departments. I thank Chief Sullivan for his immense service to the town during his career and his support of Deputy Boone and his advancement in preparation for this role. So, I'm very confident in Deputy and soon-to-be Chief Boone. I've had the pleasure of working really closely with him for many, many, many years. And I'm very excited with where we're heading, so.
Terrific. Well, that's a lot, a lot of accomplishments.
I was fortunate and lucky enough to work with good people that helped me along the way, so.
Thank you. I'd just like to say thank you to the board for supporting the town administrator's decision. I'm excited. We've all worked together throughout the years, whether it's different committees or projects or right-alongs or things we've done, so I'm excited to be part of this.
Terrific. Just go around, I'll start with you, Jamie. Do you have any comments or questions?
Yeah, I do. Just to say how excited I am and how proud I am of our community's decision and how proud I am to know that you're going to be at the helm of such an important role. And having gotten to know you over the last few years, like you said, via right-alongs, via finance committee and part of my cluster, I couldn't be more proud, you know, of you and what you've done and what I know is yet to come. So, thank you, and I look forward to working even more closely with you.
Thank you. That means a lot.
Much the same. Congratulations. You, in my opinion, you are the best candidate, hands down. You've done exceptionally well. I mean, I learned a bunch of things about you that I didn't know. You know, I've known you for some time and the way you have conducted yourself as leader in that department and the town, stepping in the roles that I don't think you exactly knew what you were getting into, but once you got into, you handled it professionally and just outstanding. So, congratulations and really excited the town has made a great decision.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
I'll just echo what my colleagues have said. I'm very excited and proud that you stepped up, you have stepped up for years, and that Connor made an excellent decision in nominating you for that position. And I continue to look forward to working very closely with you. I've known you for a number of years, and I'm looking forward to the continuation of that relationship.
Thank you.
And so, we've worked together closely on Eastern Wings of Hope, which is the Substance Use Coalition, you and Gary.
Yeah.
And you've both been tremendously supportive of that and really given a lot of insight when we first came up with some, you know, out-of-the-box ideas. Both of you were very supportive and very willing to learn and do what it takes to support that. So, I've seen that replicated to other things that we've done in the town, especially working with the Human Rights Committee over the last several years. It's really, you know, these things have taken us in areas that have surprised me, and you've really risen to the occasion and always been willing to take on more to do that. Another thing that Connor read that, to me, really stands out is, we never had a public relations person, and that was so important because when there's a crisis happening and somebody has to report that out, you need somebody that's going to be calm and thoughtful and have all the facts and to have it be a consistent person. That was really a game changer, in my opinion, of how we communicated police work to the public, so I really want to thank you for that. And then finally, the transition plans that we've always had, you know, I always think of this running our town as a business, and you wouldn't run a business and have the CEO in a position where they're going to retire or move on and not have somebody trained all along the way to be able to step into that role. And also, you know, your leadership, it inspires other members of the police to look at other positions, promotions, and that kind of leadership by example is really important. So, I'm really glad that that's how this has all worked out, and we're really excited to have you take on that role and be here for a long time.
Thank you.
So, we have a few other regular business items in the executive session. I'll record that in.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, we have a couple of other items. One-day liquor licenses for a tapped beer truck. So, this is a private event for David Gooding at 209 Washington Street. AV Shemtavab Tapped Beer Truck is applied for a one-day beer and wine license, a private corporate event for David Gooding, Inc., to be held at 209 Washington Street in Easton on Wednesday, June 29th, 2022, from 5:30 p.m. to 8:30 p.m. An Easton Police Detail is not required for this event. Can I get a motion and a second?
So moved. Barger.
Second.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. And next, we have Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District, the Summer Music Series. On behalf of Eastern Shovel Town Cultural District, Frank Altieri has applied for a series of one-day beer and wine licenses for the Summer Music Series. All events are scheduled to be held from 6:00 p.m. to 10:00 p.m. outside of Oakseam's Memorial Hall. Easton Police Details are not required for the events. I'm just going to give it a little plug. I am the chair of the cultural district, so I will tell you, we've been working really hard on this, and this was made possible through a grant from Mass Cultural Council and support from some of our local businesses, including Frank from Shovel Town Brewery. So, every Wednesday beginning July 13th, there's going to be a summer concert. The music is really, really great, excellent bands. It's going to be free to the public. There'll be food for purchase and beer and wine for purchase through Shovel Town. So, I really hope that people will come out and support this, bring kids, it's family-friendly, older people, so I hope to see people there. So, with that, if somebody would like to make a motion for those two, they're going to do two at a time, I guess, so two licenses for Frank Altieri at Shovel Town Brewery.
Oh, sorry.
Yes, we did them all, all the season, they wanted to roll out.
Oh, we did?
Yes.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry.
So moved. Prove all of them.
Second.
So, that's Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Excellent. All right, and the, so the next one is an application for a new common victualer license for Thai food dairy, and I believe that's you, if you want to come up and sit at the table here. So, we have an application for the common victualer license at 574 Washington Street, which is the Harvard Place Building on Route 138. The application has been reviewed by town departments and is cleared for approval and subject to the applicant satisfying the pre-opening inspection requirements and obtaining a new food service permit with the Board of Health prior to opening. So, welcome, and if you could tell us a little bit about your restaurant?
It's a Thai restaurant, and we've been open for five years already, but we used to be located in Brockton area, and the lease is over, so we had to relocate from Brockton to Easton. And yeah, we have some authentic Thai food. We have a couple of locations. We have one in Mandar, one in Middleborough, and we hopefully to open one in Easton as well.
That's great. I've had your food before, and it's delicious, so.
Oh, really? Which location?
Brockton.
Oh, Brockton, so that's, that's us, yeah. Unfortunate things happen when the leases run out, and we kind of had to figure things out, and we said, let's just, let's go over Route 24 and see what they have available. And I know that driving by here before, there used to be a Thai restaurant there, maybe a decade ago. I thought it was still there, but it's not, so we're looking to take their place in the community as the Thai restaurant.
Well, Brockton's loss is our gain. Comments or questions from the board?
I just appreciate the fact that you want to do business in Easton. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
And I like Thai food, so I'm looking.
Oh, thank you, thank you. Yeah, coming into Easton, we noticed there's a lot available here, a lot of resources, even a lot of local community things, but just, you know, granted that Wednesday thing, we'll be there too, we'll check that out, but it's definitely good community, good support, and we definitely appreciate the help that we can get, so.
Terrific. So, one other thing I'll just tell you about is that we have an app called Discover Easton, and you can add your restaurant to it. I'll email you some information on it, and so it's a free app that people can download, and you can connect your venue to it, and it's free advertising.
All right, excellent, thank you.
We'll let you know about that specifically. All right, terrific. Well, if there's no other comments or questions, can I get a motion to approve this application for the new common victualer license?
So moved. Barger, second.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? That's unanimous. I understand that you might want to look for a liquor license, and so if you want to reach back out to Michael Blanchard, the Assistant Town Administrator, he'll answer any questions that you have on that.
Thank you.
Thank you.
So, thank you for choosing Easton.
Thank you, thank you for having us on.
Sorry, I'm going through my.
Uh, yes.
My roadmap, yeah. Okay, item seven is a road closure request for a block party on Shady Rest Road. We have a request attached from Chris Boudreau of Shady Rest Road. The neighborhood is asking permission to close a portion of the section of Shady Rest Road from Summer Street and Baltic Gap on Saturday, July 23rd, 3:00 p.m. to 9:00 p.m. with a rain date of July 30th. Mr. Boudreau proposes using a combination of vehicles, traffic cones, and signs indicating that the road is closed. The request has been received by the Public Safety and Department of Public Works with no concerns, and the recommendation is the board approve the road closing request contingent upon coordination with the police and fire departments to ensure proper access for emergency vehicles. Per usual process, the applicant must apply for any necessary temporary sign permits through Inspection Services Department. Mr. Boudreau can't be here tonight, but we have all the information we need to vote on this in the package, so. Any questions?
None.
All right. Craig, if you want to make a motion?
So moved. Second.
Barger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Okay, and now we go to item eight, which is a discussion on vote intent to award contracts for furniture fixtures and equipment and informational technology, otherwise known as FFNE slash IT vendors for the Blanch A.A. school as outlined in the PMA consultant's memo dated June 22nd, 2022, based on recommendations for FFNE consultants Point Line Space. So, welcome Chad.
Good evening. Thanks for having me, and it's good to see everyone in person again. So, the memorandum really kind of sums it up at a high level. What it doesn't tell you is the contract packages, the full contract, although attachments, backup bids, quotes, so on and so forth are being compiled right now. We expect to have those from the Point Line Space subconsultant within the next week, and then those will be ready for execution. Tonight, we're just looking for a notice of intent to award, as you had stated. The total amount of that notice of intent to award is $220,000. That includes a mixture of furnishings and technology. At this point, it's mostly cleanup items, it's no-bid items, it's a couple of stragglers that just weren't purchased yet, small things like waste baskets, stuff like that. We do believe this will be the final bulk FFNE and IT purchase. Things do happen on a project this size, a vendor might say, maybe the chair's been discontinued, we have to pick a different one, but this covers all of the core materials for the project, so happy to report that right now, we are showing an uncommitted amount based upon that budget that we had set several months back. The uncommitted amount's $154,000, so some good news on that front. Happy to answer any questions you might have.
Any questions from the board?
I was just going to add, if, just when the board, if the board is to approve this, I think we had specifically for prior ones, a notice of intent has already been issued on this, I believe. So, this would be voting. In the notes, it indicates authorizing the schools to actually commit and purchase these items, right?
Correct.
Right. Just, so this is one of, I think, 30 contracts, and just so paperwork ends up being so voluminous that we've been going with these, issuing a notice of intent, and then having the board vote upon seeing the cost to basically authorize the town to execute these once we get the paperwork in, so I just wanted to.
So, do we need to include that in the motion that letting, to grant the Eastern Public Schools the authorization to purchase, or is that implied by the intent to award?
So, I would, that is a vote to award the contracts that's described and authorize the schools to execute them.
Okay. Elizabeth, you got that?
Yep.
Did you give a comment?
Just, the only one was, need times and if, where we are on the queue is, I know we're all on track in terms of building, but this seemed to be the one piece that was going to complicate things a little bit.
It is, yep. Definitely something we're keeping a close eye on, so we're in regular contact with the vendors. Right now, we're being told everything is on time, so the, most of the IT stuff, which is really critical, will actually be shipping out in the next couple of weeks, not going to be installed until August, but that was the stuff we were very worried about. The challenge when it comes to some of the furnishings is the vendors themselves don't always know if there's a delay until it didn't get on the chalk or the boat or the train. So, there's always that chance that we'll need to do something quickly to react to that, whether that's just bringing over cafeteria tables, for instance, from one of the other buildings, just to hold over until the new stuff comes in. We have options, but right now, we have no need to, no reason to suspect that that would be the case. We think everything will be in the building.
Sure. Thanks, Chad.
No problem.
Chad, if you get this stuff rolling, where do you store it before you have a chance to put it out?
So, the bid request and the contract package gives some flexibility, so it tells me we need to have it ready by October, mid-October, which is the substantial completion date, but we have the right to push it back until December if we don't want to receive it just yet.
So, you don't have to see it at all?
Right. Yep. So, it's a little bit tricky, as a lot of these vendors do drop ship, but what we require is them to take it into their warehouse and store until we're ready for it.
I just want to point out that we've discussed this many times in many meetings, so we're not just making this decision inside of five minutes to approve this, so, just for the public, not you, who've been presenting all along, that we're.
I was actually mesmerized by substantial completion less than four months from now because we've been talking about this since 2017, so.
Yeah, building looks great. If you have a chance to get over there, floors are in most of the building, a lot of the cabinets are in, ceiling tiles are going in, there's paint on the walls, there's tile. It's really coming right along, so.
Four months, that's going to be here in a blink.
Happens fast.
That's great. And, you know, every time I see you when we talk about these schedules, I'm always have that sick pit in my stomach thinking, oh, is everything going to be on schedule? And you've done a great job, you and PMA and the whole team of keeping the school planning committee apprised of any kinds of changes or things that are happening, but we've been, you know, knock on wood, we've been pretty lucky through some of the challenges with supply chain and price changes and things like that, so you've been on top of it, and I think that makes a big difference, having people that are really very in tune with that.
Thank you. It's been a great project and a great team, and we're certainly happy to work for the Town of Easton, you've all been wonderful to work with. But thank you.
All right. So, with that, Craig, do you want to make the motion?
So, we're making a motion for the authorization for vendor contracts to be executed by the school department.
Yes.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor? Unanimous.
Can you get used to this?
I know, I just had to hesitate in my head. Thank you for being here tonight, Chad.
Thanks, Chad. I appreciate it.
Good night.
Okay. We are going to go into an executive session. So, we are going to vote to go into an executive session to return to the meeting when we're completed. This is the, this is under purpose two of Mass General Law 30A subsection 21A, to conduct strategy sessions in preparation for negotiations with non-union personnel or contract negotiations with non-union personnel Keith Boone and Michael Blanchard, if an open meeting may have a detrimental effect on the bargaining position of the public body, and the chair so declares. So, I'll need a motion to enter executive session, a second, and then we'll do a roll call vote.
Move to go to executive session.
Second.
So, that's Barger and Lamb.
R G S.
Lamb E S.
Seven yes.
And Fortunetti yes. Terrific. Mr. K, we're going to ask you to step outside, and we're going to be brief. So, we're going to shut off all our microphones.
I got it, sir. No, that's. There's open F D O. Yeah, anyone that's in Washington.
You don't trust weirds, Richard?
Building suspended, stay back. How you getting you?
You know how like building codes are written?
This clock is off also.
Yeah, I turned mine off while meeting was still.
Okay, Joe, blink if we're off.
That's off, that's off.
Yeah, we're going back to five and six. Joe, we're ready to go, uh, you can carry us? Excellent. Okay, so we are now go to item five, which is the discussion and vote for the execution of the police chief Boone's employment agreement. I'm happy to say in our executive session, the board unanimously voted to accept your, and ratify your employment agreement, so we want to say congratulations, chief. We're very excited that you are taking on that role for us, and we wish you continued success and partnership.
We'll see you on July 11th.
All right. Thank you. Congratulations, we're going to not see you in a couple of weeks. Thank you.
Thank you so much. And then for item six, in executive session, we, the board, voted unanimously to ratify and execute the assistant town administrator, Michael Blanchard's employment agreement. So congratulations, Michael, and we're happy to have you continue. And we love working with you.
Thanks, I love working with you, so thank you.
All right, now we are on to nine, the annual reappointment of constables.
Sure, attached in your packet is the application for Constable Harold March. He is the only constable we have that is expiring this June, I believe.
His contract expires.
It's a three-year, sorry. I got it. Sorry. I missed the joke. Technically, unfortunately. His appointment expires at the end of this month, he's applied for renewal, and it has been reviewed by the treasurer collector and the deputy police chief, there's no concerns with the work that he has been doing, and so we recommend a reappointment for a three-year term, with the condition that we provide an updated bottom line file.
Okay, any comments or questions? All right, sounds good. Would somebody like to make a motion to reappoint Harold March as the constable with a term expiring June 30th, 2025?
So move. Bodger.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Do you have to take a roll call vote for that panel?
I traditionally do four appointments.
All right, why don't we do that? Roll call vote?
Bodger and March.
Lamb March.
Stebbins March.
And Full Janetti March. All right. Item 10, acceptance of resignations. We have two resignations. The first one is from Michael Luke for the agricultural commission. His term was expiring June 30th, 2024. And the second one is from Irene Dean from the human rights committee. Her term expired June 30th, 2023. We want to thank them both for the work that they've done and the time that they've committed to the boards that they're on, and we'll do this separately. We'll also take a roll call vote to accept their resignation, so Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Luke from the agricultural commission?
So move. Bodger.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb and a roll call vote?
Bodger Luke.
Lamb Luke.
Stebbins Luke.
And Full Janetti Luke. The other one is for Irene Dean for the human rights committee.
Move to accept the resignation of Irene Dean from the human rights committee.
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb, roll call vote?
Bodger Dean.
Lamb Dean.
Stebbins Dean.
And Full Janetti Dean. And we want to thank them both for their time. For item 11, the annual board and committee volunteer appointments, we have an attached list of uncontested appointments and associated volunteer forms submitted by the applicants. The board and the committee charges were also attached to our reference, and we will reference those appointments as a slate when considering reappointment. So we do have a suggested motion for that. Does anyone have any comments or questions on that list?
Thank you to all those members.
The only thing that I would mention on this is that there are a number of open vacancies on some of these, so I'm just going to run through really quick. For the agricultural commission, there is an open seat. For the audit committee, there's an open seat. For the cemetery commission, there's an open seat. For the human resources board, it looks like there's one for the shovel town cultural district, but the person who's holding that just didn't fill out the application he's intending to renew. For public spaces, and then for recreation, there's three open seats, and I know the recreation commission has always attracted a lot of interest, so if you're watching at home and you have an interest in recreation, please fill out the volunteer form on the town's website. If you go down on the lower left side in the blue navigation bar, you'll see a button to fill out an application form. So if nobody has any comments or questions, Craig, if you want to read the recommended motion?
I move to approve all uncontested volunteers for terms as prescribed to each committee as listed in the slate.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. The next item is discussion and votes for the board appointment of select board members to representative committees. So the board, in addition to our role on the actual select board, we serve on other committees around the town as well, and generally, those align with something that's of a particular interest for the board and committee, for the select board member, and I'm just going to go through, if the person still wants to serve on the committee, let me know. If you want to make a change, let me know that as well. So for the affordable housing trust, Jen Stacy is the select board representative. She's doing a great job, and I think she really...
Yeah, we're going back to five and six.
Joe, we're ready to go, uh, you can get us.
Excellent.
Okay, so we are now go to item five, which is the discussion and vote for the execution of the police chief's employment agreement. I'm happy to say in our executive session, the board unanimously voted to accept your, uh, and ratify your employment agreement. So we want to say congratulations, chief.
Thank you.
We're very excited that you are taking on that role for us and we wish you continued success and partnership.
We'll see you on July 11th.
All right. Thank you. Thank you again. Congratulations, we're gonna see you in a couple of weeks. That's nice, thank you.
Thank you so much. And then for item six, um, in executive session, we, the board voted unanimously to ratify and execute the assistant town administrator, Michael Lantzer's employment agreement. So congratulations, Michael, and we're happy to have you continue, um, and we love working with you.
Thanks, I love working with you, so thank you.
All right. All right, now we are on to nine, the annual reappointment of constables.
Uh, sure, attached in your packet is, uh, the application for Constable Harold March. He is the only constable we have that is expiring this June, I believe.
His contract expires.
Uh, it's a three-year, sorry. I got it. Sorry. I missed the joke. Technically. Um, his appointment, uh, expires, uh, at the end of this month, he's applied for renewal, and, uh, it has been reviewed by, uh, the treasurer collector and the deputy police chief. There's no concerns with the work that he has been doing, and so we recommend a reappointment for a three-year term with the condition that we provide an updated bottom line file.
Okay, any comments or questions? All right, sounds good. Um, would somebody like to make a motion to reappoint Harold March as, uh, the constable with a term expiring June 30th, 2025?
So moved, Bodger.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous, do you have to take a roll call vote for that panel?
I traditionally do four appointments.
All right, why don't we do that, uh, roll call vote?
Bodger March.
Lamb March.
Stebbins March.
And Full Genetti March. All right. Um, item 10, acceptance of resignations. We have two resignations. Uh, the first one is from Michael Luke for the agricultural commission. His term was expiring June 30th, 2024. And the second one is from Irene Dean from the human rights committee. Her term expired June 30th, 2023. Um, we want to thank them both for the work that they've done and the time that they've committed to the boards that they're on, and we'll do this separately. Um, we'll also take a roll call vote to accept their resignation. So Craig, if you'd like to make a motion to accept the resignation of Michael Luke from the agricultural commission?
So moved, Bodger.
Second, Lamb.
That's Bodger and Lamb and a roll call vote?
Bodger Luke.
Lamb Luke.
Stebbins Luke.
And Full Genetti Luke. Um, the other one is for Irene Dean for the human rights committee.
Move to accept the resignation of Irene Dean from the human rights committee.
Second, Lamb.
It's Bodger and Lamb, roll call vote?
Bodger Dean.
Lamb Dean.
Stebbins Dean.
And Full Genetti Dean. And we want to thank them both for their time. For item 11, the annual board and committee volunteer appointments, um, we have an attached list of uncontested appointments and associated volunteer forms submitted by the applicants. The board and the committee charges were also attached to our reference, and, um, we will reference those appointments as a slate when considering reappointment. So we do have a suggested motion for that. Does anyone have any comments or questions on that list?
Thank you to all those members.
The only thing that I would mention on this is that there are a number of, um, open vacancies on some of these, so I'm just gonna run through really quick. Uh, for the agricultural commission, there is an open seat. For the audit committee, there's an open seat. For the cemetery commission, there's an open seat. Um, for the human resources board, it looks like there's one for the shovel town cultural district, but the person who's holding that just didn't, uh, fill out the application. He's intending to renew. Uh, for public spaces, and then for recreation, there's three open seats. And I know the recreation commission has always attracted a lot of interest, so if you're watching at home and you have an interest in recreation, please fill out the volunteer form on the town's website. If you go down on the lower left side in the blue navigation bar, you'll see, um, a button to fill out an application form. So if nobody has any comments or questions, um, Craig, if you want to read the recommended motion?
I move to approve all uncontested volunteers for terms as prescribed to each committee as listed in the slate.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. All right. Um, the next item is discussion and votes for the board appointment of select board members to representative committees. So the board, in addition to our role on the actual select board, we serve on other committees around the town as well. And, um, generally those align with something that's of a particular interest for the board and committee, uh, for the select board member. And I'm just gonna go through, if the person still wants to serve on the committee, let me know. If you want to make a change, let me know that as well. So for the affordable housing trust, Jen Stacy is the select board representative. She's doing a great job, and I think she really likes that committee, so I would, uh, ask for a motion to reappoint Jen Stacy to the affordable housing trust.
I move to reappoint Jen Stacy to the affordable housing trust.
Second.
Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous. Um, I think we have to do roll call votes for all these as well, so.
A Bodger Stacy, Lamb Stacy.
Stebbins Stacy.
And Full Genetti Stacy. Uh, for the age friendly advisory committee, we have, uh, one seat open for that, and currently I serve on that one. I'm happy to continue with that.
Move to reappoint, uh, Dottie Full Genetti to the age friendly advisory committee?
Second.
That's Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger Full Genetti.
Lamb Full Genetti. Stebbins Full Genetti.
Full Genetti, Full Genetti. Uh, we have one for the audit committee. I forget who that is, is that you, Jamie? Mark?
It is you.
Oh. Um, do you want to still be on the audit committee? All right, excellent. So, um, Craig, would you like to make a motion to appoint Mark to the, uh, reappoint Mark to the audit committee?
I move to reappoint Mark Lamb to the audit committee.
Second.
Bodger Lamb?
Lamb Lamb.
Stebbins Lamb.
And Full Genetti Lamb. Okay, next is for the budget subcommittee. That is?
Stacy and Stebbins, yes.
Oh, okay, excellent. Um, for Jen Stacy and Jamie Stebbins, uh, we can vote them as a slate.
I move to appoint, uh, Jamie Stebbins and Jen Stacy to the budget subcommittee.
Second.
Bodger Slate? Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger Slate?
Lamb Slate?
Stebbins Slate.
Full Genetti Slate. Next, for the economic development committee, that's Mark and myself. I'm happy to still continue to serve on that unless somebody else wants to.
I also am happy to continue to serve on that.
That's good to know, that's good. Uh, I, I move to appoint, uh, reappoint both Dottie Full Genetti and Mark Lamb to the economic development committee.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger Slate?
Lamb Slate?
Stebbins Slate.
And Full Genetti Slate. Next, for the green communities committee, that is Jamie Stebbins.
I move to, uh, reappoint Jamie to the.
You didn't even ask.
That's okay, I know how, I know how excited he is about it. You have no choice in how the committee likes him, so I, I knew that anyway, that was good.
That was my next question. I feel the committee wants me, but I'm glad to continue for a payphone.
Okay, so you're making that motion, Craig?
Yeah, absolutely, yes.
Second, Lamb.
Bodger and Lamb?
Bodger Stebbins.
Lamb Stebbins.
Stebbins Slate.
And Full Genetti Stebbins. And human rights committee, that is our very own Craig Bodger. So Craig, do you want to still continue to serve?
Oh, absolutely, absolutely, pleasure.
I'll make a motion that Craig continue to serve.
Second.
So that's Lamb and Stebbins?
Bodger Bodger?
Lamb Bodger?
Stebbins Bodger.
And Full Genetti Bodger. So as, uh, I hope people at home can see, we do really enjoy being, serving on these, um, these other committees and, uh, grateful to be reappointed to them. So these appointments run for one fiscal year from July 1st to June 30th, and, um, these appointments must be made at an open meeting, and we have to be sworn in again for these as well, so, um, so keep that in mind. The next one is a letter of support for Sawmill Village at 540 Foundry Street, Easton. Um, in our packet, we have a letter to the Easton Conservation Commission in support of the Sawmill Village project. In order for this project to move forward, the conservation commission must grant waivers from certain wetland bylaws. The letter details the importance of this project and how it relates to the town's long-term housing, economic development, transportation, and environment goals. And, um, it is recommended that we adopt the letter of support, which will be submitted to our partners on the conservation commission as they hear the application. Did anyone have any comments or questions on the letter?
I thought it was very well written and, and very specific to why we think it should be continued.
Do we want to read the letter? I think it's exceptionally important for that whole economic zone, uh, and I enthusiastically support this development.
Uh, so the letter says, "On behalf of the select board, I'm writing in support of the Sawmill Village project proposed at 560 Foundry Street, which is before the conservation commission for permitting. We understand that as part of the application, the project proponent seeks waivers from certain wetland bylaw performance standards, which requires the applicant meet three standards that would allow the commission to grant the requested waivers. The first two of those standards must be evaluated by the conservation commission on the merits of the project's ability to protect the relevant wetland resources, values, and functions. The third standard requires the project provides benefit in the public interest. This project provides a number of benefits to the residents of Easton, most addressing needs and meeting goals discussed in the Envision Easton, the town's master plan, including housing, neighborhood connectivity, traffic improvements, and economic development. Public comments received during both the Envision Easton process and the 2019 Five Corners visioning charrette reflected residents' desires for a connected, walkable neighborhood where people could live, shop, work, and play. This project is a catalyst for the revitalization of the Five Corners Furnace Village District and will create a neighborhood connected to the commercial services, conservation lands, and work opportunities. The project, which will tie into the Five Corners sewer system, redevelops the long-vacated former Belcher Foundry site to the much-needed residential housing. By designing the project to take advantage of the compact neighborhood overlay district zoning, 44 new smaller homes, 1,800 square foot gross floor space, will be brought to market. This is a housing type attractive to first-time homebuyers and people looking to downsize. These households increase the market for businesses in the district, providing an economic benefit. Plans are underway for both short-term and long-term roadway improvements along Foundry Street. Long-term, the town is planning for pedestrian and bicycle accommodations and traffic management improvements. Contingent on the project being successfully permitted, the project proponent is committed to fund and construct the Foundry Street slash Paquana Cade slash Sawmill entrance traffic improvements, as well as contribute a total of $382,800 towards the overall Foundry Street improvement design costs. That's $8,700 a unit. In addition to generating new growth revenue that ensures the success of the DIF program, this project is expected to be a catalyst for much of the economic growth within the Five Corners Furnace Village District, and will have many positive effects, not only for the businesses and residents in Southeaston, but for the town as a whole. We appreciate your consideration and express our appreciation, appreciation to you and commissioners on your thoughtful deliberation of this important project."
Not that that did not cover a lot, but one of the really neat things about the proposed traffic improvements of this project is that it will create the space necessary for the, another committee that the board has appointed, the Swift's Park Committee. That, uh, intersection improvement is kind of the linchpin to that, uh, rededication of that site that was originally a memorial for, uh, first responders to the 1918 pandemic, and that committee's working on, uh, getting into the visioning and design process for, uh, a, a rededicated site that will pay homage to those who responded to the 1918 pandemic, as well as those who responded to the COVID-19 pandemic here. That's also connected to the historic fences and the other, uh, benefits in that area funded by voters at town meeting this spring, so it's, it's really just, um, there's a lot of great activity in that corridor, so.
Terrific. Okay, um, so can, would somebody like to make a motion to allow me to sign and send that letter of support to the, uh, conservation commission?
I move to, uh, support Dottie signing the letter to the conservation commission, Dottie Sawmill, Bodger?
Second.
It's Bodger and Lamb, all in favor? Unanimous, terrific. And that brings us right to 6:59, I was getting nervous, I forgot this was a timed item, and I'm thinking, did we forget to do the contested, the contested boards and committees? So, um, that is, we're gonna do that, just, we have to wait until exactly seven o'clock before we start that.
And, uh, Dottie and I may, while we're waiting, uh, I believe we, uh, may have contacted one of our applicants, but one of those, uh, appointments or boards that was initially going to be a contested interview, we had, uh, somebody withdraw that was the library board of directors, and so that is no longer contested, and those appointments were made.
Very good.
So, you were welcome to stay, but, uh.
Well, I mean, I bought a copy of my resume, I just thought, like, that seemed like an appropriate thing to do. So I'll give Dottie a copy of my resume, and then I'll go home and have dinner.
Thank you, Louie.
So, uh, thank you.
Thank you very much.
You're very welcome.
Good to see you.
Okay, see you.
Bye.
Bye. So we have an attached list of contested appointments and the associated volunteer forms submitted by the applicants. All volunteers for these contested seats have been invited to attend the meeting and be interviewed by the board. The charges of these boards and committees were attached for us to review, and, um, we have for the conservation commission and the zoning board of appeals. And, and we'll specify the term length of each appointment based on the available terms listed in the contested volunteer sheet. All employ, all appointments will be made by a roll call vote, and not all, not all candidates are able to attend, and that will not influence our decision. We'll look at the, um, the, um, the volunteer applications that they've submitted. So first, uh, for the conservation commission, let me just find this in my notes here.
Dottie, uh, just, there's a, a footnote in the, uh, packet, so CARCOM is meeting right now, um, I think, like, at the exact same time we are, which is not atypical, so none of those incumbents could be here.
Right. Okay, so we have three applicants for appointment. Um, Albert Benson is the incumbent, Michael Spadia is the incumbent, and Ryan Souza is a newcomer. We can only appoint two to the conservation commission. Um, before I just give a brief overview of their resumes, um, I do want to say that the conservation commission is one of the most important commissions that we have. Uh, there's a real learning curve to, to coming on there, and it's, um, it's, it's very important that we have consistency among that board. The commission's responsible for planning for natural resource protection, acquiring important land and water areas, and managing the properties for natural conservation and passive recreation as set forth in the 1957 Conservation Commission Act, uh, which authorized each city and town in Massachusetts to establish a locally-appointed municipal agency to undertake the responsibilities. So the first, I'm just gonna go in order that I have them in my packet, Albert Benson. He's, uh, currently serving on the board. He's a retired energy industry executive, uh, with a BS in geology, a BS in finance, an MS in finance. He's worked with Mobile Oil Corporation, multiple senior executive positions, for example, corporate planning, operations, treasurer in Japan, new business development, renewable and solar, Massachusetts Department of Public Utilities, US Department of Energy, um, the list goes on and on. He has previous experience in the finance committee and the building committee, and currently on the, serves on the conservation commission. So his skills are broad energy industry knowledge, detailed analytical ability, interest in climate change, conservation and mitigation, staying on top of new developments and technologies. And that is Albert Benson. Uh, the next is Michael Spadia. He is, um, he's been active, an active board member on this board for three years, and has just become the new trail steward of the eastern section of the Bay Circuit Trail. This will now help with his role as vice chair of the Easton CARCOM, which bridging the gap of the old Foundry to Wheaton Farm. This will bring a great deal of trail connectivity to town. And his skills are trail work, wildlife habitat, and wildlife habitat. And the next one is Ryan Souza. Uh, Ryan has seen and been around many projects in the eastern area that involve conservation department. Uh, he has not served on any previous boards or committees. His skills are the ability to lead a group of strangers, he can have a conversation with anyone. So, um, anybody have any comments or questions on the three applicants?
The other thing I would say is that you, I, I want to echo what you just said, Dottie, earlier, about continuity on, on a, on a conservation commission is very important, and it takes a lot of time to learn all the bylaws and all the wetland requirements, um, and I think it's very important to continue that process.
I think, uh, Mr. Benson, he was just appointed, he should not very long ago.
All right.
So, I'm, I'm gonna support Mr. Benson because I don't think he's had the time to get his feet really wet, although he's outrageously qualified, um, I will mention that, yeah.
Okay, if somebody would like to make a motion, uh, for the first, uh, conservation commission renewal, and that, this will be a term for three years, expiring June 30th, 2025.
I move to reappoint Albert Benson to the, uh, three-year term after June 30th, 2025, or until June 30th, 2025.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Bodger and Lamb for the reappointment of Albert Benson through June 30th, 2025. Uh, um, this will be a roll call vote?
Bodger Benson?
Lamb Benson?
Stebbins Benson.
And Full Genetti Benson. And for the second position for Michael Spadia, also three years expire in June 30th, 2025?
I move to reappoint Michael Spadia to the three-year term, uh, ending June 30th, 2025.
Second.
So that's Bodger and Lamb and a roll call vote?
Bodger Spadia?
Lamb Spadia?
Stebbins Spadia.
And Full Genetti Spadia. Um, I would like to thank Ryan Souza for throwing his, uh, hat in the ring, and I'll reach out to Ryan to get to know him a little bit more. Where, there's often openings on not just this board and committee, but other ones. Uh, sometimes people are better suited to ones that they didn't know were available, so I will, um, reach out and see if there's any other opportunities to have him serve the town. So thank you for that. And the next one is the zoning board of appeals. Uh, first we have Ryan Cook. I recognize him. Do you want to?
Not long enough.
Do you want to come up, Ryan? So for the zoning board of appeals, we do have, uh, your, uh, real estate broker and a licensed builder, um, for 13 years, a builder for six years, the current vice chair of the ZBA. Uh, you've completed two full terms as a regular member of the ZBA, and, uh, as a real estate broker and builder, I look at the zoning bylaws on an almost daily basis as part of regular due diligence. So, you want to tell us a little bit about yourself and?
Uh, sure, let's see, moved into town in 2000. Uh, my last just graduated from high school, so my three, all three of my kids have been through the, uh, the Eastern school system. Been in real estate now for 13 years, and I really do, um, aside, the zoning boards actually helped me out in my career. One, I've been interested in seeing the town, um, continue to grow. Uh, obviously, I have an interest in, uh, protecting the property owner's rights, um, especially issues that come up in, like, the village section that doesn't necessarily, uh, conform to current zoning bylaws, but is in the character of the neighborhood, um, were likely to, to not make it very difficult on people because it's in character. Um, so there's a lot of things that go in that. I've been on a number of, um, 40B hearings, um, which are always, uh, a joy. But in, in particular, um, the one on Williams Street a couple of years ago, I was the one dissenting member of the board. Everyone else was, um, ready to move forward, and there were enough townspeople that said they wanted to fight it, and I said, "Well, if you want to fight it, that's, that's your right, and I support that," and I was the one dissenting member. Um, you know, I think it's not, it, it's important to understand what the town's goals are, economic development. I was on the zoning board, uh, the zoning bylaw rewrite a couple of years ago with the former chair, Walter Marioni. It just, I, I found it to actually be fun. Initially, there was an opening, I was like, "Well, I should be more involved in town," but, um, it's actually become something that's fun, and then I've actually had the opportunity to train, I have 35 agents working for me, I've had the opportunity to train them on zoning bylaws and how to help, better help their clients, um, and make a part of their regular due diligence when, um, they have clients looking at a piece of land, a piece of property, what can they do with it? Well, let's look at the zoning bylaws and try and help them better understand that stuff. So, um, I mean, it's helped me in my career, um, I think it's, I think I've been a good member of the board, and, uh, I enjoy doing it. It's my time to move on, and it's my time to move on, but I enjoy doing it.
Well, I haven't heard any complaints about you, and that's just generally, um, generally a good sign.
Sure.
So any comments or questions from anyone on the board?
I do have a comment, so I, I, I think you've served very well, fair, reasonable. I think you bring balance to the board, which is needed on every board. Uh, I fully support you for another term.
Thank you.
I concur with what Mark had to say.
Jamie?
I'm gonna defer my comments on this one, so.
Okay.
Just looking over a couple of the other resumes right now, but.
And I like how you've said that you've, um, you've used that knowledge to spread beyond the zoning board. And I like how you've said that you've used that knowledge to spread beyond the Zoning Board of Appeals. Terrific. Well, thank you so much. We're going to do the other two introduces.
Great.
All right. Next, Jeremy Kay. And I should mention that the period of time, the two periods of time is five years, which would be an expiration of June 2027, and two years, which would be an expiration of June 30th, 2024, for the alternate. So Jeremy, you're currently the incumbent alternate.
That's correct.
And let me just pull up your, so you, your relevant experience is law school and 18-plus years practicing law, including real estate and zoning litigation. And you've been a zoning board alternate for the past four years. You read right and listen well. That is definitely a good quality to have on any board or commission.
Thank you. I've lived here, I grew up here in Easton. Moved back here about 15 years ago after college and law school. And I have two kids who are going to the Easton schools now, or well, just finished at the Easton Middle School this past year. I originally, let's see, I worked for the DA's office in Brockton for a few years when I first got on the bar. And then I went to work for Marcus Arico in Braintree, where I learned a lot of real estate litigation. And I was there for about four years and started out on my own, I'll say, in 2008. And basically a litigator, but I do drawing and having worked at Marcus Arico, a lot of condo work. And I think when I moved back to town in about 2010-ish, I, so that was about, what, 13, 14 years ago? I originally saw the position on the board, and I think there were a number of incumbents at that time and didn't get on at that time. And then about four years ago, I saw that there was an opening, so I applied again. So I've been the alternate for about four years. Being the alternate is kind of a, although I feel like my litigation of litigated zoning matters, I feel like that kind of gives me some insight as to what sometimes is going on outside the lines. But nonetheless, being the alternate has allowed me to, I kind of, most of the time I don't end up voting. So I end up reading the materials and coming in excited to hear about it. And then I listen and end up not voting, but that's okay. And that's how you learn. And I've learned from those who are sitting, like Ryan, who was here before me. So I feel like it's a good way that I can put my limited skills to use for the town. And if you'd like to have me as an alternate again, I'd be happy to do that.
Great. Thank you. Any comments or questions from the board? All right. Terrific. Thank you so much for being here. And are you familiar, Jeanne? I hope so. If I'm not, Jeanne, you're welcome. All right. Thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you, everyone. Thank you, Matt's chair and members of the board.
So just to go through your resume, your occupation is an attorney for the U.S. Department of Veterans Affairs, 2012 for the present, a graduate of UMass School of Law in 2005, formerly Southern New England School of Law, courses in real property and zoning issues. Worked for the Town of Falmouth Building Commissioner from 2006 to 2016 as the Assistant Zoning Enforcement Officer. And in that role, represented the town's position at several ZBA hearings, which you regularly attended. Also provided testimony to the Conservation Commission, Historic Districts Commission, and Planning Board when required. As an associate at the Emmett and Emmett Law Firm in Falmouth, represented clients before most town boards would focus on issues before the Zoning Board of Appeals from 2006 to 2008. So thank you for being here tonight.
Thank you. Because that's a little slice of my life. Thank you very much. Appreciate the opportunity to have a moment come before you all. And I didn't find out until just recently that this is a challenged position. I did see that it was open, and I had no information as to whether or not somebody would be reapplying. But I think that you have to dress for every game. This is something I'm very sincerely interested in. Moved to the town in about 2014. Have had a rather checkered and wonderful, I think, career. I was naval aviator for almost 20 years. I, my kids, when they were leaving the nest and heading off to their own adventures, I did go to law school. And ended up, in that period of time, working in zoning, I found just sort of an interesting balance, I think, between being on the town side and then coming back again, serving, appearing on those same boards that we would oppose as a lawyer representing folks' interest in conservation and zoning. And developers would come to us in many areas. And it's just, I felt, an interesting balance. One of the things that I enjoyed, I think, more from working as a member of the, as an employee of the town and working for the building commissioner, was that, what I think I'm really bringing to it is helping, I think, and the folks here have already mentioned it, helping the regular town members, property owners, who have this sense that, you know, this is my property, I can do what I want with it. And trying to kind of educate through the bylaws, because that's where our authority comes from. I think of, use that example of the Halloween lawn ornaments. When you pull the plug and they deflate, there's nothing. That we, our authority comes from the bylaws, from our Massachusetts general laws as well. And where do we get the power to do something? And I think it takes some patience and some skill to be able to communicate with those people who are trying, figure they have a right to do what they want to do with their own property, to develop it, to work with variances, setbacks, to, excuse me, special permits, and to work with some of the special ins and outs of the bylaws. But I think it's really critical to know the bylaw back and front. Now, if you were to ask me, I think I still know the Falmouth bylaw better than this one. I did get a chance to kind of look through some of it. But the format is very similar. And I think that we serve a very important part in trying to kind of, to listen. I think one of the other gentlemen talked about being a good listener. I think that's a good part. But I think we can also be influencers on the board, so that even if we're not a voting member, we can have an opinion, a point of view, and be able to express that. I've enjoyed living in Easton, have only lived here since 2014, so I can't match what some of the other applicants have listed. But I must say that my, I remember that my grandmother worked for, I think, over 20 years as a cook at Stonehill. My father had a company before the, before the apartments right across the library became their own apartments. They were, it was a business zone. He had a, an office there where they were trying to develop a product for the FDA. So these were things that we're talking about 10, 20 years ago. And a brother that lived in another industrial section and worked for Pharmisol, which was out near the border between us and Brockton on Belmont Street. So just have some interesting connections, but have always just found this to be a real gem of a place. Where else can you find five H.H. Richardson buildings and a bunch of testaments to them to say, as much as Olmsted, to have the schools acknowledge their significance and history as well? So I would appreciate an opportunity. I think that there's plenty of work to do. It's not its own board. It doesn't work, it doesn't work independent of planning, of the Historic Districts Commission, of Concom. It all, there's always a balance. And I think that many times, what had always fascinated me about the zoning was the story of the Empire State Building having the shape it has precisely because of zoning bylaws. So it looks like it does. It's unusual in that it has a certain symmetry that some of the, that some of the buildings from that period didn't have. But the zoning laws in New York City in 1916 created the Empire State Building. And I just find that the, when a city skyline is a reflection of what's in a manual or a book or a set of bylaws, it's really intriguing. And I think the parallel might be that we don't necessarily have the skyscrapers that, you know, dip in so many feet or so many square feet per story. We do have a zoning map that does reflect careful thought. You can look at it by color, and it really does show a balanced approach by the town to have some industry, some light industry, residential. And there's lots of green, which is really encouraging for other protected uses of what we all hope to preserve from a conservation standpoint. And then, of course, there's the odd elomocinary part that is Stonehill College. So I appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
Well, thank you. Any comments or questions from the board?
You've made this a very difficult decision.
I appreciate you letting me blabber.
20 years as a naval aviator. You have had a very remarkable past.
Had as many takeoffs as landings or landings as takeoffs, which I think is the goal. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much.
Question. There are five people on the board, two incumbents?
That sounds right, Ryan. Sorry, I just closed my laptop, so I don't want to help us. Yes.
So the second incumbent is not, is not being considered tonight. Is that correct?
That's correct. There's only one of the five year terms being considered tonight. Yes?
Correct. Yes, the only two terms expire this June are the one full term and the one.
Which is 2024? One is five years, one is two years?
Correct.
Okay. All right. I agree with you, Mark. It's a difficult decision.
So, you know, when this happens and we have three exceptional candidates in two positions, obviously, we can only vote for two. But unless there's been something really troublesome about somebody who wants to run for reappointment, we really will always, you know, go for the people that have already served because they've put in the time, and if they're doing a good job, we don't usually switch things up. That said, there are changes to these boards and committees, and I'm so glad that you came forward because I'd like to get to know you a little bit more and maybe we could talk offline. I would definitely still recommend the two incumbents, but I really think that there's an opportunity for you, maybe not right now. But as Mr. Kay said, you know, the first time that he came before, he was in the same situation. So I, you know, I hate to say that, I really do. But I'm just really excited that we do have three great candidates.
I feel the same way. I mean, Mr. Cook and Mr. Kay have done an outstanding job. And it's, you know, when somebody does an outstanding job, you don't want to take it away from them. Even though you have an absolutely phenomenal candidate also vying for the position, it's like, you know, there, you guys have done outstanding. So I'm appreciating it, you know. And it's hard. It is really hard.
I'll just say, I appreciate Jeanne, you coming out and one of the first things she told us. You did raise it as a contested position, maybe if that model might be fully.
Yeah, no, just to be clear, when, every year when all of our volunteers across all of our boards are up, we advertise for everyone. We give everyone, including the public, a chance to apply and for the incumbents to reapply. But we don't know until that deadline passes if someone has, if there's more candidates than there are seats. Because as you noted on your uncontested reappointments, you sometimes have boards where every incumbent reapplies, and you sometimes have terms that end and all three incumbents don't reapply, and you don't have a new person come forward. So just because there's, you know, upwards of 70 of them per year, we do it all at once.
Yeah. No, it wasn't a question of protocol, but I just appreciate, yes, your engagement and coming out. You sound like a fantastic member of my community.
Thank you.
2014 isn't short. You've been here now for eight years. And I hope your conversation with Dottie is very fruitful. There's a number of other, like you said, unfilled and will go unfilled positions in town that, you know, in the new world, might be an opportunity for you. So thank you very, very much.
Appreciate the opportunity. Thank you.
So with that, Craig, if you want to make a motion for the first one position, that's a five-year term.
I move to reappoint Ryan Cook, five-year term ending June 30th, 2027.
Second, Lamb.
That's Bajra and Lamb, and it's a roll call vote.
Bajra Cook.
Lamb Cook.
Stevens Cook.
Full Janetti Cook. And then for the second seat, for Jeremy Kay, for the incumbent alternate, which is a one, which is a two-year term expiring in June 2024.
I move to reappoint Jeremy Kay to the alternate position with a date ending June 30th, 2024.
Second, Lamb.
That's Bajra and Lamb.
Bajra Kay.
Lamb Kay.
Stevens Kay.
And Full Janetti Kay. Thank you for being here tonight, and I'll reach out to you.
Thank you, everybody.
Thank you, Jeanne. Appreciate it.
Terrific.
What's on?
Yeah, we have, your conversation, Dottie.
All right. And item 14, I think this, we're getting close, right? Item 14 is the discussion and vote for a nomination of the town's representative to Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors, Joseph Pitti, who is the new deputy director of Health and Community Services, Community Engagement and Programming. Every year, we do get the request to nominate a town's representative to Old Colony Elder Services. We have in the packet a memo from Nicole Lung, the chief executive officer from OCES, requesting the nomination. And Kristen Kennedy and Connor both recommend the, and request that the board vote to nominate Joseph Pitti. And that term expires June 30th, 2023.
And he starts, I believe, Wednesday. So this will be on his desk.
His first order of business. And for people at home that don't know what Old Colony Elder Services is, they are an amazing nonprofit agency that does a lot of work in the community to support our older neighbors. They, actually, I just participated with them a couple of weeks ago in a march to stand up against elder abuse. So they're a real great advocacy group as well. So if somebody would like to make a motion to nominate Joseph Pitti?
I move to nominate Joseph Pitti to be our representative on the Old Colony Elder Services Board of Directors.
Second, Lamb.
So that's Bajra and Lamb in a roll call.
Bajra Pitti.
Lamb Pitti.
Stevens Pitti.
And Full Janetti Pitti. Item 15 is Town Administrator Notes.
I do have a couple. So one is that the Civil War monument is currently planned to start being moved on Monday, July 11th. We had a public meeting about that, walked through in good detail with the subcontractors to get a good sense of what they're going to be doing. If anyone's in that area, you'll see the laydown area is starting to get mobilized. DBW will be working with RJV and our subs to have a designated viewing area for anyone in the public who wants to watch that occur. We'll be publishing more specific information as that date gets nearer and we line up those folks. But just wanted to put that out there. And then another item, this is not before our next meeting, but just wanted to make a note that we're currently targeting a employee training for our office staff here in Frothingham Hall on Friday, the 15th, a safety training. And we will be closing the building to the public that day, both Frothingham and meeting town hall. So just put that on folks' radar. We'll publish notice in advance of that. There's no major statutory deadlines that day. It's a Friday in the middle of July, so we're banking on it not being majorly disruptive.
Terrific. Anything else? Michael, anything? You want to throw in there, or?
No, just, I shouldn't say more. Just to say a little more, I just wanted to say thank you to the board and to Connor. Unlike Deputy Chief Boone, I have not lived and worked here in my life. And I think that's an asset. I've worked in four different communities, so I think I bring a unique perspective here. All those communities have a lot of strengths. But I just wanted to make sure you, as a board, and the public know, having that experience, I can tell you with a straight face, not lying, that Easton is just a wonderful place to work. The leadership, the cooperation, teamwork, the initiative here is just second to none. And I'm really happy to continue to be part of the team. So thank you.
Thank you.
And Select Board Notes. Starts with you, Jamie. We're going to go, we're going to like mix up the order a little bit now that I can see people on both sides of me.
No, thank you.
I have none as well.
I just have one thing. I wanted to acknowledge two people who are leaving the Human Rights Committee. And that is Irene Dean and Allison Ritchie. For their dedication to the Human Rights is Irene Dean and Allison Ritchieola, for their dedication to the Human Rights Committee, their, their investment in this, in this town, not just to the mission of the Human Rights Committee, but to diversity and inclusion across the board. They have been super members of the committee. I've been privileged to work with them over the last few years, and I, I thank them for their service, and I'm sorry to see them leave the committee.
Thanks, Craig. I agree. That just made me remember the times just going by so fast, week to week. But we recently had a really incredible weekend with a private event by the Human Rights Committee partnering with other, you know, groups through town, like Raising Multicultural Kids. They had an enormous crowd of people, much more than people anticipated, I think, over at the She Fasher. At the same time, Eastern Wings of Hope was having another event up at Frothingham. They had a really great crowd talking about the mental health and support of our children. And that Monday, we had a Juneteenth event up at the library that was very well-attended. Just really amazing community support, people coming out to be a part of these things. It's also nice to see this again now that we are able to get out and meet as groups in person. I wanted to give a shout out to all the students that are getting ready to start their exciting summer, and their parents, and thank them all for a great school year. And also to, to wish everybody a safe and happy July 4th Independence Day weekend that's coming up. I can't believe we're already there. This year is just going by so quickly. So with that, if somebody would like to make a motion to adjourn?
So move, Bajra.
Second Lamb.
That's Bajra and Lamb. All in favor? It's unanimous. Thanks, everybody. Have a great holiday weekend.